I'd like to welcome you to the City Council Meeting of September the 5th in the year of 2017. Thank you for joining us today. We have a full agenda and we'd love to hear your comments on our agenda items. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Gera.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
And Vice Mayor Jennings. Here. Okay.
And for the record, Councilmembers Warren, Councilmember Hanson, and Mayor Steinberg will be absent this evening.
Okay. You have a disclaimer?
Sure. So, the Sacramento Metric Polyton Cable Commission, this meeting of the Sacramento City Council of Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T/U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting will be repeated Saturday, September 9th at 7:00 PM on Channel 14, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you. I'd like Officer Galliano to come to the podium and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to open up tonight's discussion to start off based on the fact that the President made a decision today to end the DACA program. It's a decision that we know will impact all of us here in Sacramento. And I'd like the Chair of our Task Force, Councilmember Eric Gata, to speak on behalf of the Council, have some comments for us if you will, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. You know, first, I wanted to thank this Council and all the supporters who have helped put us, put together the fuel network and the financial and education and legal services to help all of our undocumented immigrant, refugee, and asylee, and folks who have questions about legal, their immigration or legal status here in the country. I think that set Sacramento apart about what we're going to do about ensuring that everyone has right to counsel, which is a fundamental to a democracy here. What the President is doing here and his actions to end DACA, I think, is one of the most inhumane, heartless attacks on our youth. And these are kids, many in Sacramento, who have grown up here, know no other place than Sacramento, and all they care to do is study, the productive members of our society. I mean, we have over 800,000 DACA recipients in our country, who that is their particular, only focus, is to be good citizens, to be competitive, to be engineers, doctors, and to be dreamers. And so, the fact that the President is doing this, I think, is disheartening. Many of these kids, because of DACA, about, at least from what we, recent information we've got, ninety percent, seven of them, ninety-seven percent of them, are gainfully employed, and they're contributing to our nation, $1.2 billion to the economy already, against all odds. And we know, just from the California Endowments Research, again, that in Sacramento, $60 million comes to the county just from sales tax revenue from documented immigrants here. So, it's disheartening to hear that the President is ending DACA, and whether his decision is to end it today or in six months, I think, is short sighted. It obviously is not in the best interest economically for our country, and goes against everything that, in America, we think about, which is if you work hard, if you commit to your community, that we honor that and we accept that. Lastly, I just want to make sure that for all those dreamers out there, to reach out to your local resources at your campus, whether you're at Sac State, UC Davis, or any of the Los Rios Community Colleges, that we have allocated, as a city, resources to make sure that people get the appropriate legal direction, and to visit www.cityofsacramento.org/daca, that's D-A-C-A, or contact 916-245-6773 to make sure that you get appropriate direction and get the right information. There's a lot of fear mongering going around, but we will get you the right information. And with that, I want to thank everyone on this Council for your support of that, of that action.
Yeah, then we want to thank you for your leadership, sir. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Councilmember Gera, for the work you do on this issue. I think in light of the President's action, it's very important for people to realize that this issue is going to go to Congress, and very likely, Congress will be forced to take action. Therefore, I think it's imperative that we all express our views to our congressmen and senators, to express our appropriate views about comprehensive immigration reform and some iteration of the Dream Act. So, there's work yet to be done. There is a time lag in the implementation of this rescinding of DACA. So, it's time to get busy.
Councilwoman Ashby.
Yeah, I echo the comments of Councilmember Gera and Harris, but I just wanted to add, because the Mexican consulate is out there in District 1, that they have been a terrific partner to us, as we have faced issues with groups that are worried, or concerned, or looking for a mechanism to move forward. The consulate is a wonderful place to start, and their phone number is, obviously, online, just like the Mexican consulate, the one listed now is 916-329-3500. I think that's a general number. And if you need additional help contacting the right person specifically for DACA, feel free to reach out to my office, and we'll put you in contact with the folks that we work with over there regularly. They have been absolutely phenomenal.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. It's the, you know, I'm saddened by the decision that was made by the President today, but it expresses a truism. Elections have consequences. And during the elections, various communities were asked, "What do you have to lose?" Well, for this community today, it's apparent what you have to lose. It's incumbent upon all of us to stay active politically, to find candidates that we like and support, and to work to get good people elected. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I think it's important, not only to do what everyone has said here, but to stay active, to stay involved, but also to make sure that we express our views and our voice be heard. So, with that, we'll move to the next agenda item, which is a public comment, matters not on the agenda.
Thank you. I have ten speakers for matters not on the agenda. The first is Emma G. Millis. Following Emma is Fago Clark.
While you're coming to the podium, everyone gets two minutes, and if you need to go longer than two minutes, I will try to give you a second or two longer, but I have to be consistent and keep everybody at the two-minute mark. So, if you'll help me, I'll work with you.
Very good. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before the Council. I'm very upset about this situation, and it is a citywide situation. It's not as widespread as the horrible situation that we have nationally, but it's really important to me. On January 10th, 2017, a large limb from a city tree fell on my car, breaking the windshield and the passenger side mirror, tearing the whole unit off. Shortly after, a city utility worker knocked on the door, asking if we knew who owned a 2006 Buick Lacrosse across the street. I couldn't, didn't believe my luck. He inspected the damage and gave me a work order number, 2622513, with instructions on how to proceed with the claim for this damage done by a city tree. It took so long to get the repairs done that I filed a non-op on my car, February 20th, as the registration was due, and I wasn't sure I could come up with the money for the repairs and pay late registration fees as well. When I filed the claim form, April 17th, I forgot to include the $10 non-op fee. The process is designed to be drawn out as to discourage people from following through the extended process. First, obtain a claim form from the city clerk, repair the damage to have an exact amount to request, wait 45 days until after it is turned in and time dated to then file for damages. The next step is a denial from York Risk Services that the city is at fault. At this point, my claim will go before the Small Claims Court on September 18th at 1:30 PM. The amount of damages I'm claiming is $268. The emotional stress is much more severe. The city has armored itself against its citizens. The city Attorney's Office has more important things to do with. Shouldn't there be a dollar amount of a claim that is clear cut? A windshield, a mirror, a city employee witness of the aftermath? This is not a major expense. No personal injury suit, no death occurred. How much money is the city paying per hour to have the liability claims this small end up in Small's Claims Court?
Ms. Millis? So, your two minutes is up, but I want to get you some help, because I know you have the rest of your letter.
That's why it was recommended that I come here.
Right. I want to get you some help. So, I've got the City Manager, who's going to direct you to a staff member, and if you want to leave a copy of your letter, you're more than like, welcome to do so.
I forgot to put my name on the copy.
Okay. You can give it to her, and she can take care of that, and we, she can send copies to all of us, so we can get the full content of your letter, and then the City Manager will, will send someone to help you.
My next speaker is Fago Clark.
Sir, hold on. Go ahead.
Ms. Millis.
Sorry, Fago.
I'm sorry, Paula.
I'm going to finish what you gotta say, Laura.
Let me wait till she's finished here. Now, Ms. Millis, I apologize for you going through, what you've gone through this. I'm going to have our staff follow up with you to figure out how we kind of work through some of the logistics here to get you where you need to be.
I'd like to see my.
And telephone number would be great.
Yes, it is.
Perfect. Thank you.
My next speaker is Fago Clark. Following Mr. Clark is David Andre.
So, I'm going to start off on kind of a positive note. Last time I was speaking, I was going off about the fact you were trying to pass an ordinance that would further criminalize panhandling. After reading an article in the BIC, that you guys have backed off on doing that and are actually looking into doing something very positive as an alternative, the day labor van. That would be a brilliant idea, because most people that are panhandling are doing so because they can't find work, and they need to find a way to make money. And the fact that it would be something that goes around and picks up trash, helps with litter abatement, you know, things that are actually benefiting the city, is another great aspect of it. So, I would encourage the city to actually look into making this a reality, because I feel it would be a lot better expenditure of funds than criminalizing people, which costs way more money in the long run, especially when lawsuits and stuff like that get involved. Plus, it helps people feel better about themselves when they're able to work, even if it's just for a day or two at a time, you know? There's that sense of, hey, I earned this money, I, you know? And chances are, you'll probably make more money doing that than you would panhandling anyways, unless you're like, one of the randoms that do really well. So, I do applaud the, even the discussion starting on that, and I'd be, I'm one of those that would take one of those day labor jobs, you know? So, I do also want to say that I know you guys get tired of seeing us, as we discussed this camping ordinance and all these other things. And I've heard you say multiple times, well, what about the county? What about the county? Well, the sad reality is that that ordinance started here in this city. Once we're done dealing with that camping ordinance, we will be moving on to the county. So, let that sink in. We're here until that camping ordinance is repealed. You want us to get out of your hair, go to the county, and start giving them the same grief? Get rid of the camping ordinance. That simple. Have a good day.
Thank you, Fago.
My next speaker is David Andre. Following Mr. Andre is Armando Flores.
Hi, members of Council, and Mr. Jennings. Word on the street is that our tent city has been basically counseled. There's a lot of tension on the street right now, and going into the cold, wet season, it's not going to get any worse. So, I want to be one of the first representing Sacramento Homeless Organizing Committee to ask, what's in this plan? Can we get some feedback from our elected officials on what we're going to do come winter time? Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
Next speaker is Armando Flores. Following Armando is Eric Frame.
Hello, City Council. I'm here again to ask that you try to work on repealing this ordinance you have against the homeless. It's a nuisance. It's something that is not going to change things that are happening in Sacramento. The homeless population keeps increasing day by day. People are losing their jobs in downtown area, they're losing their housing, because we are allowing people to get kicked out of their apartments, so somebody else can come in and pay more money than they are paying, so they end up on the streets. We have, today, I have five people that are brand-new people in the streets. That's a big number for one day. And these are people that are residents of Sacramento, that had jobs, that have been paying taxes, that have been following the laws, but they lost their jobs. They got kicked out of their apartment because they couldn't pay what most cities, landlords are asking for. It's ridiculous that in Sacramento, we have to pay $1,600 for a 700-square-foot apartment. That is out of control. So, we need to work on a rent control, and maybe try to find more jobs for these people, help them with their housing, stop taking their cars away if they're sleeping in their cars. That is so amazingly inhumane, that a city like Sacramento will take a car away from somebody that is their only place where they can sleep, is the only place where they can live and get away from the street. You don't want them on the streets. Why do you take their car? It's ridiculous. We're trying to make Sacramento a better place. You guys always talk about making Sacramento a first-class city. It's not happening. You're spending the money in all the wrong places. Thank you.
Thank you, Armando.
Next speaker is Eric Frame. Following Mr. Frame is Robert Copeland.
That's just an interesting book. Nice to see you. I missed you last week. I have a list of grievances against the Council. Number one, the criminalization and subsequent murder of the poor and homeless citizens of Sacramento. Starts with the unconstitutional no camping ordinance, of course, which has killed many, including one, Michael Nunez, who froze on the steps of City Hall last winter. The closing of public bathrooms, the shut off of water fountains, noise machines to prevent sleep, the new ordinance, which thankfully has been stopped, that would make panhandling harder. Feeding humans is still illegal, technically? I'm still wondering that. I'm not sure if that's true or not. And then I hear cars are being taken. I'm also wondering, after all this, who is pushing the drugs into the homeless population? Number two, KCRA 3 reports Sacramento is the second-worst child trafficking city in the USA. FBI calls Sacramento the hub of child trafficking. Yet, Sacramento, the city, has only two people investigating this matter. I've spoken to the chief, I've spoken to a captain, they all say that's so. Why is that the case, if we are the second-worst city in the nation in terms of human trafficking? I also saw the DEA's presentation, which dedicated less than $100,000 to the investigation of child trafficking. That doesn't make sense either. I know you know her, please speak to her for me. Number three, the attack on free speech. Members of the public are only allowed to speak one time on a consent calendar, which often has 20 or more items on it, which means we only have two minutes to speak on 20 or more items. Two minutes, by the way, is not nearly enough, clearly, for me to get through my list of grievances. Number four, inaction in regards to affordable housing. We have a problem with too many vacant buildings in the city, and yet, we can't do anything with those vacant buildings in terms of housing humans, despite having a housing crisis. We pleaded for rent control, and that plea, those pleas have been ignored. The refusal and destruction of the vote on tent city. Ignoring the solution and ideas that we've come to you with, tiny home villages, which have worked out in several cities across the nation, Detroit, Seattle, Portland, et cetera.
Eric.
Your whole person care grant promises to house 2,000 people over three years. Let me just finish this page, but we have 2,000 people going homeless every year, so that's not too, that's not very helpful.
Eric.
Yeah.
So, I'm listening to you when you talk, and so, when I call your name, I need you to listen to me. Okay? So, your two minutes is up, and I need to get your final thought in less than five seconds.
Okay. Well, I finished page one, so that's pretty good. I'm shocked I got through it. But, yeah, in addition, the air quality is pretty crap. Thanks.
My next speaker is Robert Copeland. Following Mr. Copeland is Dan Patauski.
How you doing, Robert?
Last week, I was at the State Capitol as part of the, for Housing Now Coalition, as a member of ACE, and there was a couple of City Council members I ran into there. Mayor Steinberg, who is not here, advocating for more housing in California, and Eric Gera. I think he was also advocating for more housings in California and Sacramento. I want to say to both of them, I wish Steinberg, thank you, because we need more housing. I agree with that. That's one thing I agree with, both those people with. We need more housing in Sacramento. And some of those people came from all the way down LA to led businesses at the Capitol, and one of the people, as a member of ACE, was a City Council member from Richmond. So, I know some City Council members in California are wanting more housing in their districts and in the state. And get rid of anti-camping ordinance, because I know it's not helping nobody, it's not helping Sacramento, it's not helping the city, it's not helping the homeless population. Who is it helping? I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't think it's helping anybody. And now, this has gotten personal, because my niece is having a hard time to find a place in Sacramento, and she's got two small children. And one of my greatest is having a birthday next Tuesday, so I missed next week's City Council meeting, so I'll be back in two weeks. Thank you.
You're not going to share your birthday with us, Robert? You're not going to share your birthday with us?
That's not my birthday, it's my great niece's birthday.
Oh, okay. All right.
My birthday is on a holiday in July.
Wish your happy birthday from all of us, all right? Thank you.
Next speaker is Dan Patauski, and then Richard Wake.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor Jennings, City Council members, City Manager and City Clerk, Dan Patauski. I'm a degreed arborist who's lived and worked in Sacramento for the past 27 years, and I have 39 years' experience of working with the trees. I just wanted to apprise the City Council of more trees that are being removed for development projects. It's what I refer to as the undeclared war on the Sacramento trees. Now, this started back in 2007, and it was a culmination of events. There was a new City Manager, a new Planning Director, and a new Urban Forest Manager. And the City Manager at that time, Ray Carriage's, direction to City Staff was, "I want development sites shovel-ready." And if you ask any project manager what shovel-ready means, is all the lot is cleared and ready to develop. And so, what happened was, there was this paradigm shift, went from protect and preserve the city trees to remove and replace. And this photo shows you, you can see on the right-hand side, projects before, and on the left-hand side, what they're looking like now. So, what's happening just recently on J and 18th Street, there was three tree, city street trees removed. On 2025 L Street, there's 15 city street trees being removed. At 2,000 Stockton Boulevard, which is Stockton and T Street, there's eight trees that are removed. And there's going to be an additional 17 that might be coming up between 37th and 39th Street on S. And also, on R Street, between 13th and 16th, last year, there was 29 trees proposed to remove. The tree activists, we appealed to the Parks Commission, they rendered a decision to save 15 of them. Well, those 15 are back on the chopping block, and it'll be heard next week. So, we need to save the trees. Climate change, we all know about it, every leaf makes a difference. The other concern is that we're losing plantable space. It's not just the trees being removed. When the trees are removed, the plantable space, that's not enough for a large canopy shade tree, so what's happening is our canopy's getting depleted. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. And Dan, if you have additional photos or information you'd like to leave with us, you can leave it with Neil. Thank you.
Next speaker is Richard Wake, and then Deborah Howard.
Good evening, everybody. So, I think we all agree with the comments that you guys made about DACA, but, so I'm just wondering, though, even though we all wholeheartedly agree of the inhumane treatment of the immigrants in this country, when is the inhumane treatment of the homeless going to end in this city? It's equally as bad. You know, I drive down to pick up a friend of mine who's a college graduate, graduated me from Sac State, that has a bachelor's degree in communication, that was illegally fired from his job at the Franchise Tax Board that's staying at Volunteers of America. The conditions on Sequoia, Pacific Boulevard, and North B Street are deplorable. All you have to do is drive through there to see what's going on. So, you know, at the meeting that was held at the church over in the Arden Arcade area, when I asked Mayor Steinberg what was going on with the tent shelter in City Council District 2, he said that was off the table, and that all, the only thing that was being considered was indoor shelters at this time. Yet, when I spoke to a staffer from City Council District 2 on the phone today, he was saying that there was going to be a workshop coming up in later September that was going to be presented by Emily Halcone, with changes to make it easier for the churches to open up their doors for the homeless people, and also did include the tent city. So, somebody's lying. You guys need to get more information out here about what's going on with Alan Warren's proposal for the tent, for the tent city. This has been on the table now since January. What is going to happen is, the city, it's going to get worse when the county starts going through the parkway. And yes, I agree, the garbage needs to get cleaned up, but all these homeless people are going to end up in Councilmember Ashby's district, in District 3, in Hanson's district. It's already happening in District 5, down the river. I've already talked to Councilmember Chenier's staff member about getting a volunteer day together to clean up the trash that's on 35th Avenue and Riverside Boulevard. I'm not mad at these people, but this problem is going to get worse. The time to act is now. Let's do something. No more workshops, no more BS. Let's get something done to help these people. And Mayor Steinberg, if he said that the, that the, that there, that the homeless shelter in District 2 is off the table, and it's not, then he needs to sit right here and correct himself in front of the public for telling something that was categorically false.
Thank you, Richard.
Deborah Howard, and then Randy Hicks.
Hi. So, I'm Deborah Howard. I've been employed with, or I was employed with Cover California. I was a supervisor for three years, and I was renting a room from a gal who illegally changed the lock. So, I'm taking her to court, and then about two months after that, I was laid off. So, this happened in April, I was laid off. So, I've been living in my car. I'm going to cry. So, what I'm having issues with is, the tags expired, my license expired, I don't have the money to get everything taken care of, but I'm, you know, I'm staying in my car at the park, so I'm constantly harassed. You know, you can't sit in your car at the park in the daytime, but I'm saying, these people that are having lunch are sitting in their car, but you can tell I'm homeless because everything I own is in my car. So, I'm going, moving around, and I can't go take care of any business, because I'm afraid they're going to take the car and bound it, you know? So, I don't know what can be done. I mean, you know, I just, I don't know. I can't leave my car alone, because I've also had an ex-boyfriend that's just smashed my window and sliced my tire within the last week and a half. So, I can't leave my car somewhere to go take care of anything on a bike, which I had a bike, and it was just stolen off my car. So, I just can't seem to get to the next step, you know, because of the registration and whatnot, and then being harassed. So, I don't know, I don't know where I'm supposed to park, I don't know where I'm supposed to go, you know? I have a tent, I bought a tent, but then I know everybody says the tent people, I'm in, off Garden Highway, they say they're always constantly having to move, so I don't know. I can't live in my car, I can't live in a tent, so, you know, and I'm, I did get called back to work. I haven't started yet. We're waiting for the state to decide when to supervise, have to do one class, but anyway, so at least that's good news. But in the meantime, I'm afraid my car's going to be taken away, and that's everything I own, so.
Are you okay with us providing someone to help you?
Yeah.
Okay. So, this young man, this good-looking young man, all the way in the back, with the beautiful uniform on?
Okay, I see him.
Galliano?
Okay.
He'll be there to help you out.
Thank you.
And thank you for coming to testify today.
Next speaker is Randy Hicks, and then our last speaker is Jeffrey Nelson.
Yeah, I was going to talk about one thing, but now we actually talk about something else. Thank you for about DACA. We really need to fix that, and we can't let them get away with that. So, my big subject is, I live on Marysville and Arcade Boulevard, and what's happening is, RT has a bus stop there. People are sleeping in the bus stop. And from what I understood was, the older lady who's sleeping there couldn't get into the house where she lives, because the door, they don't, they don't let her in at night because somebody's, you know, asleep or whatever, so she stays in the bus stop, and she stays in the bus stop with her friend. Now, I haven't gotten any satisfaction on this issue, because I would this issue, because I was told, okay, I called, I talked to somebody from county. County says, "Contact somebody from adult services." Adult services won't help me unless I can approve this, and she has to go through APS. And then we have to find out. She has a file on APS. So meanwhile, this lady who's in a wheelchair, who, who can't use the bathroom, that's the other thing we need, we need at public bathrooms, she can't use the bathroom in her place where she lives, so she takes care of herself outside. She still hangs out there with her friend, and I see her in different areas of, of, in my area, Marysville and Arcade, in that area. And I'm concerned about her. And I've done, I've called agencies, and I had somebody come out, and I said, "Well, what is she?" He goes, "Well, we can't help her." I don't think that where she belongs is sleeping in the bus, the bus shelters. And that's, and she's not the only person who's been sleeping in the bus shelters in our neighborhood. And so I don't know if it's a city problem, I don't know if it's a county problem, but when I tried to get ahold of somebody from the county to help me this, and I thanked the person who gave me the resource, they just simply said, "We have to, we have an APS file to hope she has one on her." So I have a feeling, but when I go back home today, she's going to be there.
Okay.
She's going to be in that, she's going to be in that shelter.
Our city manager would like to speak to you.
Would you mind leaving your name and telephone number so we can contact you and find out where this location is, and whether it's a city or a county side, we can help coordinate getting a contact?
I'll give you my contact information.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, I'll be glad to do that, because I, I, I think, I need to find, and I'm very worried now, because I haven't seen her in a couple of days, and that kind of worries me. So I'd like to, I'd like to know whether she even got in her house, or whether she's even anywhere in this city, and I'm very concerned about this. Thank you.
Randy, if you'll leave your contact information right here, and, uh, we'll get on that for you. Our last speaker will be Mr. Jeffrey Nelson.
This is more, I guess, observation from what I've seen. There's so many people out there that are mentally ill, that are out there bathing in the fountains and doing whatever they can to try to keep clean. They don't have adequate facility for women to bathe. They need to have that. I found out through the Union Gospel that the place that's on Aherne, it was designated for women. But all the time, that building had sat there vacant. And now that the Union Gospel got it, now they get ticketed and find it, and they can't even open up and operate, because the city won't allow them. $350,000 you guys paid for six and a half months for two porta potties at Aherne Street, and then nobody asked you for them. I want to know where did the money go. The police, you don't need no more police. Right now, you don't need any more police. You need to take the police you have and train them to operate and work as police officers, because the police that you have, from what I've seen, they are not doing their job. I sat there on Franklin, right there at the Rooney Police Station. I could see the crackheads and the tweakers going back and forth, so I know they up to something. They went in there, they broke into some building over there. The police officer heard, he had to hear it, kept right on going. This is what you have. Your police are not doing what they're supposed to be doing. They're too busy harassing the homeless, and they need to be doing what they're supposed to do. That's my comment. I, I have more to say.
Yeah.
I have a lot to say. A lot.
We appreciate your observations, and, uh, we will take them in consideration. Thank you very much, sir. Okay, the public comment period is now closed. We will move on to the rest of our agenda. We will move to our consent calendar, items 1 through 3.
And Mr. Vice Mayor, I do have something to read into the record on item number 3, which has passed for publication and ordinance amending Chapter 15.52 of the Sacramento City Code relating to vacant buildings. Um, the recommendation is modified to read that the ordinance will be adopted on September 19th, 2017.
All righty. Thank you very much. Councilwoman Ashby, before we take, uh, are you speaking on item, one of the items?
Yeah, would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Sorry, I missed if there were other comments on them. Are there any public comments? Okay, good. I didn't want to. Um, I just had to, Vice Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Take one moment to point out that item 1 is confirmation, includes some confirmation to boards, but including our youth commission.
Right.
And I just feel it's really important to point out that there are five appointees coming in on that board. Their names are Nazak, Sophie, Emily, Juliette, and Madeline. They are all female. They are credibly diverse, brilliant, beautiful young women who have very high standards. They're dedicated. Each came to the council meeting and presented the best of what Sacramento stands for. They come from every corner, although proudly, three of them are from my corner. These young ladies, for me, are what it's all about, and they come from all different backgrounds, from all different countries. They're at different schools, the gamut, and we can be really proud. I mean, there's a lot to be disappointed about in our country as we started this meeting, and I know as we finish this meeting, we'll, we'll end on a sad note today, too. But I just wanted to take one minute, one minute at least, to, um, note that there are good things happening, particularly in our next generation, and I am very proud to send forward five brilliant young women to serve the city on our youth commission. So I'd love to put the motion forward for consent today.
Thank you, thank you. I want to thank you for your work, uh, as it relates to equity in making this happen. So we really appreciate your work on that as well. So I have a motion on items 1 through 3. I have a second by Member Harris. I have no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Let the record show, we are unanimous, 6 to 0. Okay, move to the next item, please.
Item number 4 is the vacation of the public service easement located between Q Street, R Street, 20th and 21st Streets.
Any public comment? Any public comment? Okay, how you doing, sir?
Good. Good evening, Vice Mayor, council members, Madam Clerk. My name is Thomas Adams.
You doing, Mr. Adams?
I'm great.
Good.
With the Departments of Public Works, Engineering Service Division. The item that I have before you this evening is the vacation slash abandonment of a public service easement that was left reserved from 1936 in part of that alley that was abandoned between 2021st Q and R Street. Currently, um, on record, there's a proposed development for the Press Building, which includes a 253 residential apartment complex with, uh, ground floor commercial space. To get this, um, abandoned will help facilitate the development of this project. Public Works staff, along with utility departments, support this, and that concludes my presentation for the evening.
All right. So we have no public comment on this matter, but Councilmember Geta would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I will, uh, move to close the public hearing and move the item, and I think it's, uh, good progress for Sacramento.
Fantastic. It has been seconded and third, and seeing no further comment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Mr. Adams, you've done a great job. You've got a 6-0 vote.
Uh, you too.
Great job.
Have a good evening.
Great job. Thank you very much. All right, next item, item number 5.
Item number 5 is the vacation Opera Alley bounded between 7th Street and 8th Street.
So my understanding is that item might be continued to September the 26th. Is that true?
Yes, the recommended motion is to continue the item to September 26, 2017.
So there's a motion that been made by Member Sheneer, seconded by Member Geta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Thank you very much. We will move that to September the 26th. Okay, let's move on to our discussion calendar, items 6 through 8.
Item 6 is the city auditor's audit of the Department of Utilities inventory.
A city auditor. We did not have an opportunity to, to hear this last time. I know it's already been through, um...
Budget Audit.
Budget and Audit Committee, and now it's been recommended to come to the full council.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings and members of the city council. Jorge Seguera, city auditor. With me today is Jordan Sweeney, who is primarily responsible for completing this audit. The recommendation that is before you is that you pass a motion approving the city auditor's audit of the Department of Utilities inventory. The Department of Utility maintains an inventory of parts, tools, and supplies with a current value of just over $2 million. This consists of things such as equipment, tools, plumbing supplies, and water meters. The objective of the audit of the Department of Utilities inventory was to assess the controls over the department's inventory, identify areas of risk and opportunities for potential savings. Our scope included Department of Utilities inventory records for fiscal years 2014 through 2017. This report contains four findings. Our first finding is that strengthening the physical security of Department of Utilities inventory could reduce the risk of fraud, waste, and abuse. This finding covers issues such as stagnant inventory, physical access vulnerabilities, and better tracking of tools and equipment. We developed six recommendations to address the issues identified in finding 1. This includes implementing strategies to comply with inventory policies, reviewing the appropriateness of warehouse access, consistency in tracking tools and equipment, prohibiting employees from borrowing city-owned tools and equipment for personal use, and establishing a reasonable timeline for consolidating its inventory. The second finding in this report emphasizes that while the Department of Utilities inventory count procedures appear robust, the execution breaks down. Although this, this section gets a little technical in assessing the effectiveness of their current practices, of note is that in this section, we specifically assess the accountability of the city's water meters, which had been a problem in the past, and found that the department is doing a much better job with its tracking. We developed eight recommendations to address the issues identified in finding 2. This includes adding additional processes and procedures to the inventory count process, reviewing the current staffing resources, and updating inventory policies related to the tracking of water meters. Our third finding focuses on the Department of Utilities inventory systems. We found that the Department of Utilities inventory systems contain errors, errors and omissions. This finding focuses on improving the accuracy of the data contained within our systems, so that management can make better decisions. We developed six recommendations to address the issues identified in finding 3. This includes developing performance measures, setting minimum data requirements for inventory records, reviewing system issues with the Finance Department and the Information Technology Department, and reviewing the process for tracking inventory not in an inventory system. Our fourth and final finding focuses on user access to the Department of Utilities three inventory systems. We found that the Department of Utilities lacks formal user access policies and procedures regarding their inventory systems. This finding covers issues like who gets access to which systems, and a process for granting and removing access to the relevant systems. We developed three recommendations to address the issues in finding 4. This includes establishing formal policies and procedures for approving user access to the department's inventory systems, and continuous monitoring of user access rights. Overall, in our opinion, the Utilities Department is a good custodian of its inventory. Like with most city operations, however, there is always room for improvement, and we were happy to see that the Utilities Department staff were open to change and committed to continuously improving their operations. The department demonstrated to us the seriousness of their commitment by beginning to address some of these recommendations during the course of the audit. We would like to thank the Utilities Department for their time and cooperation in completing this audit. We look forward to continuing to work with the department to ensure the recommendations get implemented and that the benefits anticipated are realized. This concludes my presentation. I believe the Utilities Department staff would also like to address the council.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. My name is Bill Bousset. I'm the Director of the Department of Utilities. It's my pleasure to be here to briefly present to you the actions that the city has taken to improve the department's inventory process. DOU requested and funded this audit, and we look forward to the full benefit of implementing the audit recommendations. We requested this audit because we wanted an independent review of our inventory practices and recommendations for improvement. We have appreciated the thorough and professional manner in which Jorge and his staff have conducted this audit, and we acknowledge and concur with the findings and recommendations of the city auditor's report. As stewards of the Department of, uh, Department's inventory assets, we take this role very seriously. Of the 23 recommendations from the audit, nine have been implemented, and the other 14 are in some stage of implementation. Here are just a few highlights of what we have already been doing. We have reduced the number of locations where inventory is kept from nine locations to five. We have reduced the number of staff with access to warehouses, including reducing the number of staff with access to our main warehouse by about 80%. We are evaluating existing stagnant inventories and employing strategies to reduce them. We are creating a purchasing plan to ensure that items are available when they are needed, and that neither too much nor too little is purchased. We have incorporated blind counts in our inventory process, which means that staff performing the counts does not know what the count should be. In addition to these and other actions, we are developing robust performance measures that is, to assure that our inventory practices continue to improve. Also, as part of our department structure, our department structure reorganization, we are moving the logistics section from their current locations, co-location in the O and M Division to the Business Services Division, where we are confident that they will be better supported. Our inventory, our inventory practices have significantly improved before and during and because of this audit, and we are committed to implement the solutions for all of the recommendations identified in the audit by March of 2018. We're well poised for and look forward to continued improvement in our management of the department's inventory assets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, I appreciate both of the presentations. We have no public comment on this matter, so therefore the public comment period is now closed, but we do have council comments. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Jordan, I wanted to thank you personally for a piece of what I think is really great work. And Jorge, as always, your office works to save our city money and bring to light efficiencies that we can implement and, and just be a better city overall. But, uh, I like the piece about saving money. And Bill, I wanted to thank you for adopting the findings and moving forward quickly. Uh, the Department of Utilities is a big department, you know, it's, it's a big job to manage it, and I understand, you know, the problems of the past and that you're proactively working to use this audit to be a better department. So with that said, I'd like to, um, move to approve the audit.
You got there before I did, so that's fine. So it's been moved by, by Member Harris and seconded by Member Geta. There are no additional comments. Again, great job, everybody. Um, this, I'm looking forward to seeing the full implementation of the audit. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Good job, Jorge. Very good job. Jordan, good job. Phil, excellent. Congratulations. Let's move to item number 7.
Good evening, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
And council members, my name is Neil Larria. I'm a debt analyst with the City Treasurer's Office. With me is Brian Wong, the Debt Manager, and Colin Bettis, the Senior Debt Analyst, both in the Treasurer's Office. Uh, also with us is Mike Paris. He's the CEO of Blackpine City Flats LLC, the current developer, and Doug Mall with Lewis Group of Companies. He's the initial developer. Um, staff recommends that you are...
Hold on a second, I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry, sir. I'm sorry. Can we turn off all electronic devices that you don't need to survive this meeting? Okay. All right, I'm sorry.
Staff recommends that you adopt the resolution before you to authorize the issuance of special tax bonds for the Creamery CFD and authorize the execution and delivery of certain bond offering documents, including official statements, and authorize certain other actions in connection with the bonds. The issuance of bonds will provide funds for the acquisition of eligible facilities, the reimbursement of eligible fees paid, and the prepayment of future eligible fees, thereby assisting the growth and development within the CFD and the city in general. In 2015, the City Council formed the CFD, and the qualified electors within the CFD voted to approve the levy of special tax and the issuance of special tax bonds in a total principal amount not exceeding $5 million. The CFD is located in District 4, and it is the former site of the Crystal Cream and Bara Company. It comprises of 8.3 acres. The current developer plans to construct 117 single-family homes. As of the date of the appraisal report, 38 homes have been completed, of which 35 have been sold to individual homeowners. We have 32 homes in different stages of construction. The bonds will be issued in an amount not to exceed $4 million, with the true interest cost expected to be 5%, but not exceed 6%. The City's general fund will not be obligated to pay debt service. Debt service payments will be solely the responsibility of the property owners within the CFD. If the resolution is adopted, we plan to price in the week of September 18th and close in the week of October 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have applicant or appellant comments on this matter? All right. Item's been moved by Member Chenier, seconded by Member Harris. Public comment period is now closed because we have no public comment on this matter. So with that being said, motion on the table, seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Excellent job, young man. Six oh vote. Let's move to item number eight. The approval of disposition and development agreement related loan agreements for the 14 Housing Authority vacant lots in Oak Park and Del Paso Heights. Ms. Dozier, good evening.
So, good evening, Vice Mayor Jennings and council members. I am Jackie Martinez Suarez with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency. The report before you requests approval of the disposition and development agreements and related loan documents for the 14 Housing Authority vacant lots. As you may recall, in the SHRA vacant lot disposition strategy, the 14 lots located in Oak Park and Del Paso Heights were a high priority for the development of affordable housing. As such, a request for proposals was issued in December of 2016 to solicit a developer to construct new single-family homes to increase the supply of affordable housing. 10 organizations attended the pre-submitting meeting, and three organizations submitted a proposal. Del Paso Homes was recommended as a developer by a selection committee. Due to the various parcel sizes, the homes will vary from two to four bedrooms. I'd like to show a rendering of the 14 Housing Authority lots. The maximum sale price of the homes will be at 110% of area median income. Affordability of the homes will be regulated for a period of 45 years. The four lots in Del Paso Heights will be transferred to the developer during the first phase, and the remaining 10 in Oak Park will be transferred during the second phase. Phase two is anticipated to begin in the fall of 2018 after all homes in phase one have been sold. As for the terms of the agreements, a developer will use a combination of equity and private financing to construct the 14 affordable single-family homes. 12 of the lots will be sold to the developer at market value through seller carryback loans. These loans will be repaid with home sale proceeds. The remaining two lots located in Oak Park were purchased with tax-exempt bond funds and will be transferred to the developer through a conditional grant agreement in keeping with former redevelopment law. This concludes my presentation. Here with us tonight is John Griffin from Del Paso Homes and Richard Dana from Mutual Assistance Network. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Okay. So let's go to public comment first, if we can, and then we'll come back to council comments. And I believe we have one public comment on the matter.
Yes, we have one speaker, Eric Frame.
Mr. Frame?
Hello again. Vacant lots. We have a problem with vacant lots in the city. It's a quote from Mayor Steinberg. Might as well put vacant buildings in there, too, because we've got a problem with vacant buildings as well. For instance, there are vacant buildings across the street from Caesar Chavez Park. That's a park where almost 50 or 70 homeless are gathering usually each day and night in the evening, and there's vacant buildings across the street.
I'm sorry, Eric. Mr. Frame?
Yeah.
Is this about the project that we're talking about in front of us right now in Oak Park and Del Paso? Are we talking about that?
Yes, yes. There's also vacant lot problems in Oak Park and Del Paso, where we could use these vacant lots to start solving this housing crisis that we have currently. There's some empty railroad yards also over there.
Could you talk about this project right here, if you will?
This Del Paso vacant lot area. We're putting in some $646,000 homes. It's not quite affordable for most folk. I'd say we need affordable housing more than we need expensive housing at the moment, given that we have 13,000 homeless and growing in number. I hear that owners of vacant buildings, they can just write off their tax. They just say they write it off as a loss, so they get some tax benefit from just keeping buildings vacant and collecting dust. It seems like we should, you know, give them some tax breaks or give them some money or credit if they actually housed human beings that need to be housed, because we have a housing crisis currently in Sacramento.
One of your concerns about this project?
Yeah, that's a concern about this project as well.
Have you read the staff report on this project?
Yeah, I've read it thoroughly. We also need to make sure these homes are accessible to the disabled.
Thank you very much. I'll make sure you get a copy of the staff report, because I think some of your information-
I'd be glad to hear. I'm waiting on the staff report on the child trafficking, by the way, Mr. Harris.
We can talk about that later. Thank you very much, Eric.
Thanks.
Appreciate it very much. Okay. You can come back up now if you will. Councilmember Chenier.
I'm fine, thanks. We're good. So I just want to say this is a great project. These are all affordable. They run at 110% of median income. Four in Del Paso, ten in Oak Park. This is on our way to using vacant lots to build affordable housing, so it would be good if, when people testify on this, they knew what they were talking about. So that would help us all out. So with that, I just want to move the item.
Second.
Item has been moved. It's been seconded for the discussion from the council. Councilmember Chenier, Councilmember Warren, in his absence, I appreciate your work on this item in bringing more affordable housing to our communities. And with that, I'd like to call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Abstain? Let the director show you we're unanimous. Thank you very much. Thank you. Good work. Okay. Next item on the agenda, please. No, we're not there yet.
Your next item on the agenda is council comments, ideas, questions, any AB 123 reports.
Any council comments? Ideas, suggestions? Yes? Councilmember Gata.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, I mean, Mr. Vice Mayor, but elevated you for today, definitely. Just a couple events up here coming up. Tomorrow, we're going to have the Town Hall on the subject matter of cannabis over at the George Sims Community Center. We're going to have our state, I mean, our city staff discuss the state regulations and the city regulations from 5:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the George Sims Community Center. Then on Friday, at Artibio Guerrero Park, or as people remember him as Mr. G, the teacher out in the south area, we're going to have movie night at Guerrero Park, starting at, it'll be at dusk, but we'll have a resource fair at 6:30. So for folks who are going to be there, we're going to have all our departments, police, parks, fire, and neighborhood services there to discuss any issues you might have with our city. At the movie night, before the movie goes down, we're going to be showing Finding Dory. We also have an ice cream social welcoming back our Sacramento Police Chief Daniel Hahn back to Sacramento and in his new role. That's on September 11th. That's Monday at 5:30 over at the George Sims Community Center. Again, come on out. And then some Neighborhood Association meetings that are coming up is the Nepenthe over at Campus Commons, Nepenthe Neighborhood Association. That's also this Wednesday at 5:30 to 6:00 PM. Tahoe Park Neighborhood Association is on Monday, September 11th at 7:00, so after you get your ice cream, go to the Neighborhood Association meeting. And then Gina, the Avondale Glen Elder Neighborhood Association meeting will meet on September 13 at 6:30 PM at George Sims. And last, if you have some time, join us at the State Capitol for our unity rally in support of DACA.
Thank you.
Tonight.
Tonight. Cool. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple announcements on this side, too. We're having our last Food Truck Mania event this Friday in McKinley Park. They've been going every month since March and have been very popular and well-attended, so that is September 8th, 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM in McKinley Park. Then a week from this Saturday, on the 16th of September, I'm really happy to announce that we're going to enter our third year of Notomus Pops in the Park. So it's a free concert in the park. It goes from 5:00 to 8:00 PM at South Notomus Community Park, 2881 Truxell Road. The band is Solsa, which is a really interesting band, ethnically diverse and musically diverse. They play pop, solsa, soul, you name it, they've got it. A lot of fun. We'll have a beer garden sponsored by Hoppy Brewing, food trucks by Sacto Mofo. Really looking forward to this in this particular community. It's starting to pick up steam and happy to have all participants. Lastly, Mr. City Manager, about two months ago, I was involved in a meeting at the Board of Supervisors in which the Supes directed the County Exec Navgill to look at creating a board of directors for oversight of SHRA. And I'm not sure if the city has participated in that, but I would like to direct you to get with the County Exec and see what the city can do to move that directive forward to create a board of directors from the JPA members for the oversight of SHRA, and if you could please bring your report back. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a few movie nights I want to announce. This weekend, Friday night, will be at Colonial Heights, Colonial Park, their movie night. We're doing Lego Batman. And then Saturday night is also Lego Batman at Hollywood Park, at Hollywood Park Elementary School. And then I'm going to miss next week, so if I can announce next Friday and Saturday night, we're doing McClatchy. At McClatchy Park, we'll be doing Moana on Friday night, and Moana Saturday night at Lawrence Park. And I believe that's the first movie night we've done at Lawrence Park, so I'm hoping we have a good turnout for that. We're also doing Friday night peace walks still. We're at St. Paul Baptist Church this Friday, and I believe next Friday, but we'll send out a confirming email about the starting location.
Great, great, great. Okay, I'm going to give you the announcements for District 7. I want to start with the Public Safety Town Hall meeting. It's going to take place this Wednesday. That's tomorrow, September 6th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at the Robbie Waters Library, Pocket Greenhaven Library. The city manager, Howard Chan, will be there. Our city police chief, our assistant manager, Arturo Sanchez, they're all going to be there to talk about how we can make District 7 safer, how we can already take a look at what we're doing to make it safer, but what we can do in order to increase that as well. And for more information about this announcement, contact my office at area code 916-808-7007. And then coming up next week will be our trucks and such and movie night. Now, if you've never seen the movie E.T., E.T. come home. I know most of you have seen that movie, but if you've never seen the movie, this would be the opportunity to have delicious food, incredible food, free popcorn, free drink. You can bring your blanket and your lawn chair, sit under the stars, and enjoy the most incredible movie that you've ever seen. We want you to invite your family, invite your friends. Come on out and see E.T. It begins at dusk. And again, contact my office for more information. That's on Friday, September 16th, September 15th, I'm sorry. Friday, September 15th. Come on out for movie night and trucks and such. Okay. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think the last part of this we're going to do together, right?
Okay.
I have a couple of announcements, and then we'll do the last piece together. Two important announcements. Tomorrow night in District 1 is an informational meeting with SAC PD. So Captain Seifert and Lieutenant Brown will be out in the district at 6:30 at Notomus Park Clubhouse, so the HOA's clubhouse there. I will be there with them, and we are going to answer constituent questions and concerns that are tied to public safety, anything tied to public safety. Anybody from District 1 who has questions about public safety should come to that. And then this Friday is our last first Friday, and it's not even really first Friday, so it's a first-ish Friday, but it's our last one. So if any of you want to come out, we'll have a band. We have a phenomenal band, and there'll be vendors and food trucks and, I don't know, bounce houses, rock climbing, whatever fun thing. Lots of folks. I can't remember if you came to this one, Vice Mayor, or not last month. You might have.
Yeah.
You came to something similar. I can't remember if it was movie night or if it was this, but these are really fun. If you want to come out, it's 5:00 until dark, and this is, again, our last one, so I want to make sure folks know about it. We are a month into the school year in Notomus now, so summer feels like a long ago, faraway thought, so this is our sort of end of the deal. And then, Vice Mayor, I've asked Brandon to post a picture up here. I know that when the mayor gets back, he wants to do something more with this, but we lost a friend yesterday. There on the left is our independent budget analyst, John Silva, who is 38 years old. In this picture, this is not even quite two weeks ago, and he is in Mexico City with Christine Roybel, who formerly worked in District 6 and currently works in District 7 and is a good friend of District 1. And in the back there is the Chief of Staff for District 1 and another friend of John's. And these four folks, not even two weeks ago, were following their passion, they're foodies, and so they followed the food through Mexico City and enjoyed and had a really great time. And we don't know why, but yesterday, John Silva just suddenly passed away at 38 years old. He leaves behind a family. He's a terrific uncle, a really big part of the Christian Brothers alumni program, one of their lead fundraisers for some of their biggest events, very proudly a Falcon. And loved to travel, particularly in the Latin cultures, and supported women's issues. He marched with me in the Women's March back in January, right next to me and my team. Just a wonderful guy. He's a volunteer for Weave, a lover of dogs, his two puppies, Chaney and Maddox. He will miss him dearly. And what I remember most about him, besides the fact that he is one of my Chief of Staff's best friends, is that he was so excited to be hired by the City of Sacramento. He's lived here his whole life, and of course, he went to Christian Brothers, and he worked for the state. But when he had the opportunity to come and be a part of the City of Sacramento team, he was just thrilled. A guy who would wear purple ties for Kings Games and just really considered himself a part of our team and wanted to support each one of our offices the best that he possibly could. So tragic to lose him so early, and I know our friends that are also in that picture are struggling mightily with the loss because they lost their good buddy, their traveling partner, and somebody I think they expected to spend the next few decades hanging out with. So our thoughts and our prayers are, of course, with his sister and niece and nephew and family that he leaves behind, and of course, our own city staff that suffers a big loss.
That's right. So we're going to close this meeting in honor of John Silver. Not only was John a friend to many, but he was also a brother. He was a son. He was an uncle. He was a family member. He was a friend to many inside this building and a friend to many outside of this building. In case you don't know this, John was the longest-standing big brother with big brothers and big sisters. He served for eight- He served for eight years. So he not only cared about his family, his immediate family, but he cared about those outside of his immediate family, and he volunteered his time to do so. He volunteered his time at his school, as you mentioned, Christian Brothers. He chaired the alumni dinner and the annual wine tasting multiple times. That's the kind of work that you do when you're retired, but John did it while he worked, and he did a great job of raising money for that school and a great cause. In case you don't know, he was an avid musician. He played in multiple bands, much like Councilmember Harris, playing both the guitar and the drums, and he had a love for music. And you would see it when he would walk a mile in her shoes with weave. You could also see him dancing in those high heels. And so John was a true asset to the city of Sacramento and our community. He will truly be missed. There will be an opportunity for us to have the entire council honor him at a later date, and we also want to respect the privacy of his immediate family as they go through this at this time. So with that, we close this meeting in honor of our independent budget analyst, our brother, our friend, John Silva.